So, welcome to Transform Gov, the digital government podcast brought to you in association with Accenture. I'm your host Maeve Neefsey. Today's guest is Ashling Highland and she's Digital Programme Officer with Fingal County Council. And Ashling started her career in the Department of Communications where she was project manager for the National Digital Strategy. She then joined Silicon Republic and she ran the Inspire Fest conference for about four years, I think. So after that, she joined Fingal County Council, which was in 2018. So we're delighted Ashling could join us because she and her team are this year's Ireland E-Government Awards' overall winner, and also winner of two additional categories. So they kind of took home all the trophies, really. The Education Award for the virtual reality libraries, and also Smart Cities for the VR 3D planning consultation, which all sounds very wordy, wordy, but we're going to find out all about it in a second. So you're very welcome, Ashling.
That's great, Maeve. Thanks for having me.
Not at all. Pleasure. So what the heck is going on in Fingal County Council? There seems to be many cool digital projects happening there. Why do you think that is?
I don't know. Something in the air.
Something in the water in Fingal.
Something in the water, yeah. Yeah, we're chuffed, I suppose, to come home with the overall winner and, I suppose, two other trophies as well for our projects. Fingal County Council is an innovative workplace. It's kind of, I've said it to you earlier, it's from the top down and the bottom up. Like, you'll get people at all levels innovating in their work. It's all around delivering better services for the public. So, yeah, we've put forward the two projects for the E-Government Awards and, yeah, we're delighted to have one.
Well, look, before we get stuck in to talking about the projects, and of course, everyone wants to hear about them, because I know one of the reasons why our judges were very excited about the entries and why you really won the overall is their applicability across government is real. You know, you can apply this elsewhere. So we'll talk about that in a second. But I think there's a little bit more than just accident that there's innovation within Fingal, because, you know, I know it's very hard to, you can talk about innovation and trying to drive that mindset in an organisation, but it's very hard to really do. And I think one of the, I'm sure there's many things, but one thing you mentioned when we were talking earlier was that there is this innovation kind of fund. So maybe tell us some of the things, including that, that you think maybe are driving people's enthusiasm, really, and confidence to go and put innovative ideas forward.
Yeah. Well, I suppose that the Innovation Fund, innovation is part of my role, the idea of embedding innovation, the culture of innovation in the workplace. So I would have, I suppose, thought about my own role and being Digital Programme Officer, I apply for funding all the time to try and support digital projects. But I was kind of looking at it in the sense that not everyone has that opportunity to apply for funding, and maybe we could set up an Innovation Fund for staff so that they could apply for funding if they had an innovative idea. So I spoke to our CE, Anne Marie Farrelly, who's really open to innovation, and we started the CE Innovation Fund. And, yeah, it's gone three years now. I think over 120,000 of funds have been made available to the projects, 11 projects in total so far. And, yeah, it's gone from strength to strength.
But I mean, I suppose in a way that plays to your past as well, because you would have had to pitch ideas, I presume, before. So do you think that fed into you thinking about the idea?
Yeah, yeah, I think it would have. I was given the kind of role of embedding innovation in the workplace, and I was very used to applying for funding. So it was just a natural thing to kind of say, okay, well, can we get an Innovation Fund for staff? In previous roles, I've always kind of, you know, either had to hustle or apply for funding or support from different, you know, parties. But, yeah, it's, yeah, it's a great one to have in the workplace. Staff are, you know, it's any innovation as well. We say innovation doesn't have to be digital. So, you know, staff are coming up with ideas that we would have never thought of, that deliver better services to the public. So it's really great to see.
Brilliant. And I think, you know, you never know what's going to come out of something like that. But it makes it clear to everybody in the organisation, we want to hear your ideas. We've put money behind it, money where our mouth is. And in terms of, you know, deciding, and we're moving into your project a bit, and we'll touch later on on some of the other innovations that have come out of that fund, but to talk about the win, really, the idea of having interactive 3D models and VR to help with the kind of consultation with public when there's big, major infrastructural investment going on, where did that come from? How did that actually even happen?
Yeah. Well, I suppose the idea came from, we were, we were working together with Economic Development. So I sit in the Digital Services Department, and we're working with our colleagues in Economic Development on this initiative called Smart Balbriggan. And it's all around, I suppose, using a Balbriggan as a destination, as a place to trial and test innovative technologies and ideas. So we were looking at Balbriggan. Balbriggan was going through quite a big transition and transformation, town regeneration.
Kind of town, isn't it? I mean, there's, tell us a little bit about it so we get a sense of why it needed to be rejuvenated, I suppose, or why it was picked.
Yeah. It's, it's one of the most diverse, when it comes to population, it's one of the most diverse, youngest population and fastest growing. I was only looking at stats recently, and from 1991 to, it was the 2016 census, so within that time period, and it's since gone up again, obviously with the last census, it was 196% increase in population. So you can imagine how that transforms a town. You've got a very older population, you've got a very new population. I think almost 30% of the population, actually it's bigger, I think it's 45% of the population, were born outside of Ireland. So that brings its own challenges, its challenge around integration, obviously housing, and then infrastructure, you know, schools and roads and transport and all of that. But over time, definitely the town needed to be rejuvenated, regenerated, I suppose. You've got a bit of dereliction in the centre of the town, and then also the public realm needed a big uplift. Balbriggan itself, it's coastal, so it's North County Dublin. It's one of our nordest points in the county.
It's funny, because I never knew there was a beach there. But there is a beach there, right?
There is a beach there. And the way, I suppose, the public realm is at the moment, you know, there was a car park in front of the beach, and then there's a big viaduct, and the entrance to the beach isn't quite visible. So, yeah, I'm not surprised to hear you say that, because we've heard a couple of people say, you know, I didn't even know Balbriggan had a beach. So the idea, this investment and this rejuvenation is to try and open up the space, have more public amenity, and so that people will use, you know, the natural, the beach, they're widening a river, they're adding lots of amazing public spaces around having, I suppose, Sunday market spaces and summer festival spaces. So it's going to be a real destination town.
Brilliant. And so with moving from kind of the older way of doing consultation, you know, when you're going to do something big and the population needs to know about it and give feedback, there must be problems, though, if you decided to bring in a digital transformation or technology to enable it to be a better process. What were the problems before?
Well, I suppose the idea of creating this 3D model or digital, you know, twin of the town came from that, knowing that it was going to be such vast changes to the public realm. So one of the big changes is the removal of, I think, 180 car parking spaces. And then that makes way to like a more enhanced public space for people to enjoy. But that's a big transition, and that takes a long time to actually implement. So we were thinking, okay, can we get a digital version of all of these files? You know, you've got 40 odd different file types to open to try and see what the vision is from the architects. So can we create a 3D model and make that even more immersive using a VR headset so that people can experience what the space will feel like, what it will look like, before it's there? And during that transition of, you know, the development and, you know, road restrictions and any of the upheaval that has to happen for that to, you know, come into being.
I suppose before, if you're trying to look at a map, or, sorry, excuse me, a plan, an architect's plan, it's very, not everybody can read them. And so I presume in the older way, people could misinterpret things and then think there's a problem that isn't actually there. But if you're showing somebody in a virtual reality immersive experience, they know actually what they're dealing with, and they'd probably be better at coming back with feedback. Or what have you experienced? So I'm putting words in your mouth. What have you experienced?
One of the biggest things we've experienced is people's concept of scale. So you look at something on a page and it says what size it is, and you can see the building, the shape and everything. But you can't understand the scale of it in comparison to your own height and comparison to where it sits in its landscape with the trees, you know. You can't understand how big something's going to be or how small it's going to be. So the scale is something we've had from residents. We've had residents that have houses within this area that are saying, oh my God, I didn't realise it was going to look like that. Will the, will the planting really big be that fast? And one resident, that the building was, you know, I think it's a cafe, was going to be put in front of their house, and they're like, oh, that's grand, you know, it's definitely going to be that scale. We taught it a block or view, and it wasn't. But it's very hard to interpret that on a page, whereas when you put on the headset and you're kind of fully immersed in it and everything's to scale, your height is to scale in the model as well. So you're seeing things at your eye line.
So you can actually experience it in a real way. And, you know, when you were doing the project, look, you know, we try as much as we can on Transform Gov, talk about warts and all, rather than everything was perfect. No project is going to be absolutely perfect. So were there challenges that you had during the project that you didn't foresee that you had to overcome?
Yeah, there's always challenges. So we, God, we, so we applied for public sector transformation funding for this, to give us some seed funding to create the Balbriggan model. And we were delighted we got that. And I think that was early 2020, and a little thing happened.
Oh, I don't remember that. What was happening in early 2020?
Yeah. So the idea of the project was we'd create this model, and we'd go out to schools and to community centres with VR headsets and plonked them on people's heads, and they would see what the vision of Balbriggan was going to look like. And then Covid hit.
Yeah, yeah.
And so we weren't going out to any public, you know, schools and we weren't going to any community centres anytime soon, but we still wanted to drive the project forward. We knew eventually we'd be able to use the headsets. But in the meantime, we're like, okay, what can we do? So we worked with a company called Realsim. They're based in Galway.
Okay, so it's an Irish company. All right. And what are Realsim, what do they do?
They're a 3D modelling company. So they helped us to create the model. So they worked with us, they worked with our Digital Services Department, with our Architects Department to get all the relevant file types. And they create the baseline model and then the VR experience working with us. So we kind of said to them, right, we can't, we need Plan B.
This project is going down very fast. We can't use VR.
Yeah. And, you know, obviously there's funding there and you need to spend it at a certain date. So we're like, okay, what else can we do to get this project and start getting it into, you know, people's homes as well? Because the public consultation, we wanted to use the 3D model. So we created, with Realsim, they created a web viewer for us.
What does that mean, a web viewer?
The way I describe it, it's like a Google Maps of the 3D model. So you can kind of plonk yourself into it, like at a Google Maps Street View. And the way it works is the way you would use Google Maps, yeah, Street View, you know, the way you move your screen, your cursor, yeah. So we worked with them to try and make it as usable as possible.
That's a very clever idea, because I know, you know, I do an awful lot of work with tourism in Fochirland and Tourism Ireland. And Street View, people use that in huge amounts of ways, like when they're trying to go on a holiday somewhere, to really discover what's around them. And it actually works brilliantly. So I can see how that would, for a new town or a new development, to make such a difference.
And it was important for us to make it very easy to use, because we couldn't go and show people how to use it. So it had to be simple, like it had to be something that they were familiar with, because being Covid, you know, we couldn't go out and give tutorials of how to use this new software. So we put the web viewer out there, and we encouraged people to look at it during public consultation, and then hopefully have a more informed submissions. And then when we could, after, you know, restrictions had eased, we were able to go out and use the VR headsets and, I suppose, get a more immersive experience. And I suppose the 3D model of Balbriggan, it's evolving over time. So the idea of it, yes, was to use it for public consultation, but also to have people, you know, pop into the libraries, pop into their Balbriggan hub and use it as the project assay of questions, you know, when the construction is happening, when removable car park spaces are happening, when new buildings are being erected, that they can go and see. And, you know, the vision can be updated with new buildings. And, you know, we've, I think there's one of 10, you know, the harbour area of where it's being developed at the moment is one of 10 projects in Balbriggan. So it's quite a vast transformation.
So it's kind of a virtual twin, I suppose. And then you're, it can, okay, you can go in maybe and you can see what it looks like when it's finished. But you can also say, well, what's happening now? And where are we with it? So it could be different stages in the development that you could see.
Yeah, yeah. So we have pins on the model to say, you know, one of the buildings is 2-4 Dublin Street. It's this creative arts digital space that's been developed. And there's an old part of the building, and there's going to be a new build element to it as well. So we can, you know, you click on the pin, you can see what stage it's at. Is it pre-design? Has it gone to tender for the build? Has it started? So all of those updates can be made on the model. So at least we're informing people as we get updates.
And I suppose something like that, I mean, one of the biggest challenges is that it just goes on. It appears that nothing's happening for a long time, right? So you announce something, there's a lot of consultation, and then people kind of think, well, is it a black hole? What's happening? Or, I mean, I presume that was a problem with the older way, was it?
Yeah, yeah. That's one of the biggest, you know, concerns people have. They're like, great, you consulted, you know, with us, we gave you our feedback, and we've heard nothing. And, you know, that's what this model is trying to, I suppose, support, is access to information as well. So we can put up information of what stage a build is at, or what stage a project is at. When we get new designs as well, we add them to the model so people can see, you know, I think in the first iteration of the model, there was lots of hard landscaping. And then after a consultation, it changed to a lot more greenery. So the model changed.
Because of feedback from your public, your citizens?
Yeah.
Oh, very good. They wanted more green?
More green, more green spaces, more play areas as well. So they were all added.
I know, sorry, this is a slight aside, but when we were talking earlier on, there's a portal, Fingal have a portal where the, yes, a citizen, you come in and find information. And I was asking Ashling, what was the most searched for topic? What was the topic?
We've got an Open Data, Fingal Open Data Portal, and Trees. Trees is our number one Open Data, Open Data Set that's viewed every month. Like, it's nearly never knocked off the top spot. Yeah, we're probably one of the greenest Dublin local authorities, anyway.
It's so important. And I know this initiative now, whether with any sort of building project has to have that green element. And you can see it everywhere, but it makes such a difference. But anyway, I digress. So in terms of, you know, technology challenges, when you were, you know, building, basically building the models, integrating it, anything you came across, if I had to do that again, I've done that slightly differently?
I think one of the main technology challenges is we put the model out and the web viewer out, and then we realised, okay, this is a real heavy model, and it needs a high-speed internet connection, and it needs a good device. So some, most mobile phones, actually, it doesn't, it doesn't play well with the, with the web viewer version of the model. So that was, you know, a bit of a challenge. We didn't know until we were testing and we had put it out there. And so we ended up having to, I suppose, create some sort of a Plan B for that as well, in how we've kind of, not resolved it, because it's still, I think, an ongoing technology challenge to try and make these large models smaller in, you know, the download of them and, I suppose, viewing them on a broadband connection. But what we did was, we did a screen record of the desktop version of the model and created a little video of what the space will look like.
Oh, very clever.
Yeah. So when you go and try and view it on a mobile, it kind of pops up saying, sorry, this isn't mobile friendly at the moment, but here's the video. And if you're on a laptop or PC, then you can.
Okay. So you can't navigate on your own, you're watching a video of somebody else navigating. But if you go to the desktop, you can?
That's it.
And what about on a, you know, an ordinary kind of household level internet on your desktop? Can you, can you navigate? Is that a huge amount of time to download and render?
No, on a laptop is fine. On a kind of normal high-speed internet connection, that's fine. But mobile, it just wasn't, it's the screen size and everything, it just wasn't suitable.
Yeah. And in terms of your partners, so Realsim were the, your technology partner. Was there anybody else you had to bring in as part of the project?
I suppose we worked internally. So we needed our, you know, good internals, project sponsors. So Economic Development is our main project partner and our Architects Department. And then obviously, Digital Services, GIS Officer, and, yeah.
Because they all had to feed information into help build a model, I'm presuming. Is that why you needed them, or?
The model is created, I suppose, with multiple layers of data to create a baseline model. So that's the, getting the actual area of Balbriggan, so making sure that the terrain is mapped correctly, that the heights of things are correct, that the aerial photography is up to date. So, yeah, we worked with Digital Services to get certain geospatial data. We worked with architects to get their, you know, up-to-date drawings and any data they could provide with us. They also worked with external architects on this project. So we worked.
And who were the external architects? It's always good to, you know, this project obviously is going to have a great impact, hopefully. Be good to know who the architects were.
For the Balbriggan one, PKA, Polkio Architects. So we worked with them to, I suppose, get the right file types of the future vision of the model. Yeah, so they were, they were the main. And then Economic Development as well, who's all, whose kind of role is around the rejuvenation of the town. So when we came to public consultation, we'd work with them to, you know, make sure that we were supporting them with the VR devices, with training, all of that stuff.
And how would somebody give you feedback? Let's say they went through the model and they want to give you feedback. How would they do that?
So the way we worked in the consultation events, we'd have maybe an architect or someone from Economic Development there with the, you know, paper versions of the plans. And then they'd send them down to us to try the headsets on. And then after that, we had a survey, and we have the public consultation portal. So they were asked to fill in a submission based on what they had seen and, you know, to give their feedback on the future plans.
And what about getting people engaged, both internally and the public? Were there particular strategies you used to make that happen?
I suppose to get people engaged in the public, we would have, there's a, we're lucky in that Balbriggan has an Arab Balbriggan office. So there's kind of a team of people there. There's quite a big engagement. So for Balbriggan to create the rejuvenation plan, I think they had over 25% of the population take part in a survey. So there's a huge database there of people to update that are interested in the future vision of Balbriggan. So there was kind of a captive audience there, which is great. And then internally, we have all our stakeholders and then our technology partners. So.
And when you, when you, I mean, do you experience any resistance, either from the public or from internally, when you were coming up with the concept and trying to roll it out?
In the public, especially with the VR headsets, some people really want to try them and some people don't. And they're not, they aren't for everyone, that is. You know, some people just don't like them. Some people who get vertical definitely won't like them as well. So.
But they could use Street View, couldn't they?
They could. So we had that when we were at the, we're very conscious of that, you know, some people just won't want to use them. So we had the desktop viewer, the Street View, and we had the video playing on a loop on a big screen as well. So people could, you know, try the headset if they wanted, and they could look at it in those two other ways as well. So that was one way, I suppose, of getting the audience engaged. We actually used it at a couple of festivals as well. And it kind of just takes one person, once they see, yeah, once they see somebody, you'd notice like a family come over, and everyone's saying, no, no, no. And then one person in the family says, yeah, I'll give it a go. And then all of a sudden, three other members of the family want to use it. So it kind of, I don't know, it has that knock-on effect. When you see somebody using it, and it can be a little funny, you know, because they're like talking about stuff that you can't see.
Yeah, as if you can see it.
Yeah. So there's an engagement there that kind of, you kind of want to give it a go then and try it out for yourself.
And I suppose one of the outcomes, well, two of the outcomes, I'm guessing, you guys wanted, was one, that you got consultation, you know, that people actually could see what was happening and the quality of what came back. So did the numbers of people engaging in the consultation increase?
Yeah, yeah. We, I think, and one of the most recent ones is that 2-4 Dublin Street Building. And that, that had, I think, 75 submissions. And for a build on its own, like in comparison, we have another new build on a community centre, and that only had eight submissions. So that's quite a significant difference. Now, I don't know if it's just the 3D model, there's lots of public engagement.
Well, there has to be public inquiry into that, Ashling. No, it doesn't matter. We don't care. The fact that you got that many is brilliant.
Yeah, it's great to get that. So, but I find it's not even about the quantity of submissions, it's that the quality can, people really understand, after they've tried it on and been immersed in it, the quality of the submissions are a lot better. You can, you kind of alleviate some fears as well. So, yeah, we've definitely seen that.
So I'm guessing they're not asking really basic stuff, they're asking, there were detailed information. What kind of things would people be asking?
I suppose they're, we found they were quite complimentary with the visuals that they see. Obviously, with the first version of the model, they were asking for more green space, because it was more hard landscaping. But there isn't feedback, from the last consultation, there wasn't loads of feedback to say, we want this or that. It was more about, this looks lovely, and, you know, we're really supportive of it, and please keep us in the loop on progress. So.
It took you a long time, though, I would think, to get the model right, though, because I'm guessing stone colour can make a big difference, tiles can make a big difference, the colour of the landscaping, the people inside the landscape. I mean, did it take you a lot of iterations, working with yourself and the partners and the architects, to get that right?
We have very patient architects and external architects, yeah. Because this is, this is a digital twin. It is a digital version, like a gaming-type engine version of the model. So it's not going to be exact to what you will see in, in real life. But you want to make it as close as possible. You don't want to put out an image or, you know, this experience of something that's not going to look very similar. So, yeah, we worked with Architects Department around that. So we would come up with, you know, they'd have all the files sent over. We work with Gavin in Realsim. And they create this first version of the model for viewing for architects. And then, yeah, there would be feedback around, you know, that's not really the colour of the limestone, it needs to be more like this. Or, you know, we were thinking of this type of foliage rather than the trees that you have. So there was lots of chopping and changing and getting it kind of as accurate as we could. But I always say to people when I'm showing it, and they're like asking, will it look like this? And like, it will look something like this, but this is a gaming engine. This is not, you know, the real thing. You know, a tree in a game and a tree in real life will be different. So it works like that.
Yeah. And I suppose I remember seeing the Hagia Sophia, which is in a game, which I cannot remember the name of, but it is a game. And it was so close, but you don't for one second think it's actually the thing, right? It's not exactly the building. It's just, you know, it's very similar. It's simulation.
Yeah.
Right. So I can, I can almost hear other councils leaning in on this and really listening, because it's such a good idea and it's such a clever idea. But if you were talking to them, would you give them advice, tips for what you learnt in the process? You know, is it very time-consuming? It'd be really good to hear what you think.
Yeah. Well, I suppose the idea of this, like, we started off small with Balbriggan, and we've now developed a 3D model of Swords. And Swords Cultural Quarter is the main focus of that model, because that's going to be a new build in the next couple of years.
Fantastic.
The advice I would give is, I suppose, you want to make sure the model is up to date, and you want to make sure that you can update it as much as you can yourselves. So I would say adding an element of training to whatever tender you go for, because you will need a technology partner to help you. I mean, we don't have 3D gaming specialists in the council, not yet, anyway. So, yeah, it would be good to add that, you know, that's something I would add in future, especially because, you know, your, your model is only as good as, as up to date it can be, you know?
Yeah.
So you kind of need to.
It's a live thing. It's not just done and dusted when you do it once. You're organically updating. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. And as a town transforms, so let's say, let's go with Balbriggan, we've got those 10 projects. We want to be able to update them over time. But, you know, a builder might come in and develop housing or develop a new build. And we want to say to that builder as well, you know, add your designs to our model. So all of that kind of updating the model and getting it, getting it looking as up to date as possible is something you want to have, I suppose, some staff members trained on how to do that, how to use it as well. Because there's a desktop version of the model, which is really for architects and planners, I suppose, to be able to drop in new buildings and design new buildings. And you can kind of see. And you can kind of see a lot more in the desktop version of the model. It's, it's great because you can see like, you know, shadow analysis and of a, of a new building coming in. Or you can see it on a wet day in December, you know, often we're given lovely CGI's from architects on sunny days, but it's not always sunny in Ireland, so.
Very rarely, particularly this summer.
Yeah, so it's good to have that. So I would say training on how to use the model and training for staff and training on how to upload it as well, upload new designs to it.
Maybe you should go into the RIAI and see if you can do something in partnership with them to, to help the architects understand how to use it and their, their models.
That might be a future project.
I think I could feel a budget coming on. But I suppose promoting it is important. So that, I know that often can be the, the last part in a way of a digital project is that, oh gosh, you've got to tell people about it. Have you plans to do that? Did you do quite a lot of that or what do you feel about it?
That's kind of where our other project, the VR headsets and libraries came in because we were thinking, okay, we have these models, how do we get the public to use them? And for a good year, it was just myself and my colleague Lisa Deacon going out to community centres, schools, public, you know, festivals and events with the headsets and encouraging people, you know, to use them, going out to public consultation events, town halls, that kind of thing. But we're only two people and, you know, not everyone gets to go to their public consultation event because you're busy or whatever.
Of working life.
Yeah. So we were like, okay, where can we put these? And how do we engage with the public more when we're only two people, so?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And libraries were one area, we thought, okay, we can try and bring this tech into libraries and do some communications around that and to, I suppose, let people know to drop into your local library either and, and you can view the new transformations.
Yeah, well, of course, people, if they have ideas and I think there's ways that they can help you promote it, they should get in touch with you, so maybe on LinkedIn or, you know, why not? Find out the ways that you can, it's such a fantastic idea and you want more and more people to use it. So in it, do you see things coming down? We're going to, we're not going to dip into the libraries yet because we're going to do that. We're doing part two, obviously, with Ashling, our winner. For, for your future, what do you think is going to come down in terms of the public consultation? What are you hoping you're going to do and how do you extend what you've done?
Yeah, I suppose we've tested it on public consultation and for major public realm projects, it's, it's great. It's brilliant to have, you know, that immersive experience. But really we see it as, I suppose, scaling and developing and having a digital twin of every single town in Fingal. So we'd have one of, you know, Blanchestown, Scary's Rush and Lusk and all these other huts and all these other towns and villages. So that we can see how they, how they are now and see how they can change. And maybe, you know, get into the area of using them for simulations, you know, if we close this street on the digital model, how does that impact traffic flow? There's loads of things you can do when you think of digital twins. So public consultation is one area, but just, I suppose, expanding that and expanding the use of these digital twins in the council, so for different service departments, for operations departments that look after roads or for planning departments that, you know, want to see the landscape and the, the development of the towns and villages. Yeah, they've got multiple levels of use and I suppose we, we look to, I suppose, scale them, develop more and, yeah, go from there.
I can see many, 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 many applications for it. So now I know why the judges chose you as our overall winner. But look, I'm looking forward to hearing more about the other project that you won your category for, the education category. But let's kind of take a little pause there. It's such a fascinating subject, I just really enjoyed that. But I've got to thank you, of course, first, but also thank our producer, Conor Lamoran, the studio manager, Peter Rice, our videographer today and our engineer, Lee Brennan, and of course, our South Dublin podcast studio. So we'll be back with part two, don't miss it, it's going to be brilliant. There's more things to learn from Ashling, so thank you very much.
Thank you.